Our Assistant City Manager is receiving a very prestigious award, and so we'll hear more about that in the future, but thank you, Kristy, for stepping in.
Thank you, Mayor. We're looking forward to having the panel discussion tonight regarding the transport of coal for export through Eugene. Fabio Sullivan, our sustainability liaison, is going to introduce the panel members and get us started.
Great. You guys want to, maybe you want to, do you want to sort of, are you going to say anything? Because, all right.
I'm just going to introduce our speakers. We have four expert speakers with us tonight, and in order of appearance, first we have Mayor Keith Timchuk from Reed'sport, Ross McFarlane with Climate Solutions, Dr. Andy Harris with Physicians for Social Responsibility, and David Koch with the Port of Coos Bay. So we'll turn it over to Mayor Timchuk.
Mayor Pearson, and council members, thank you for having me today. I'd like to thank Babe for being so gracious with her time and making sure that I knew where I was supposed to be, and I know that I can't function without city staff in Reed'sport, so they do all the hard work. I want to thank everybody for inviting me tonight, and if I might, I'd like to start just with a few minutes of my own background. I'm on my fifth term as mayor in the city of Reed'sport, running again for my sixth term. If the voters will be good enough to send me back, I'll enjoy another term as well. I've been a port commissioner in the city of Reed'sport or in the Port of Umpqua for 16 or 17 years, and I'm a high school teacher in my real life on my 32nd year. Don't tell anybody. And I'd also like to begin by offering a little bit about my own background. I would be surprised if there's a mayor on the Oregon coast who has established a better environmental background than I have. As many of you know, for the last eight years, I've been a state leader for sustainable wave energy in Oregon, seeing it not only for its economic development opportunities but for its environmental stewardship as well. I think I'm recognized certainly as a state leader and maybe as a national leader in that field. I've also served on the Port of Coos Bay Committee to review the proposal for marine reserves, and in that, we spent 18 months reviewing any number of proposals, and in that, I was on the losing end of a vote where I voted to establish a marine-protected area just south of Charleston. The winning vote in that had voted to establish no marine reserve and no marine-protected area. So I think I have established at least some background environmentally. As a resident of Oregon's South Coast and as the mayor of Reed'sport, I'm concerned about how decisions the city of Eugene makes will affect communities and businesses and the families in my community, and those in Western Lane County, Florence, Reed'sport, Coos Bay, North Bend, and Coquille, all the railroad communities. Urban centers like Eugene and Portland are seeing signs of recovery from the Great Recession. But for 30 years and counting, much of rural Oregon has been experiencing grinding poverty and depressed economic conditions and a continuing decline. Small towns like Reed'sport have shouldered a disproportionate share of Oregon's economic woes for decades. Reed'sport, for the last 20-some years since the closing, or nearly 20 years since the closing of the mill in Gardner, the IP mill, we've seen a declining enrollment in our schools, we've seen declining business and declining populations as well. Many towns and cities along the Oregon coast have never fully recovered from the depression of the early 80s. Now the Great Recession is cutting us to the bone. We need lasting jobs. We need family wage jobs. We need economic opportunity. I believe all of us here tonight are given a responsibility by our constituents, and that is to do what we can, when we can, where we can, to create jobs for Oregon families who need them. New export terminal projects in Coos Bay are a viable opportunity that will create thousands of new jobs and grow the economy for the entire region. In Reed'sport and on the coast, we believe in the old adage, "A rising tide floats all boats." What's good for the Port of Coos Bay, what's good for employment in Coos Bay, is good for Reed'sport, is good for Florence, is good for the rest of the coast. I want to stress that this is a project that will benefit an entire region. We need these opportunities. It's good for Oregon that economic recovery is on the rise in Eugene and other urban areas, but it's bad for Oregon that our small coastal towns like Reed'sport can't enjoy the same promise. Our coastal communities rely on and enrich Eugene by visiting your community for shopping, entertainment, arts and cultural opportunities, and of course, the Oregon Ducks, class of 1979. Thank you. Our community borders don't end at our city limits in many ways. In fact, we consider Eugene as an extension of our community on the coast because we see the Eugene opportunity that we don't have on the coast, the shopping and the cultural opportunities. We visit Eugene frequently. As an elected official, I urge you here tonight not to erect stop signs to the economic recovery and livelihoods of the Oregonians, fellow Oregonians who live along the central and south Oregon coast. Creating jobs in Coos Bay and Reed'sport will benefit Eugene, too. The bulk shipping terminal projects at the Port of Coos Bay would provide communities along the route of the Coos Bay rail line with more than just thousands of new jobs. Port projects will bring continued investment in and upgrades to the extremely important Coos Bay rail line. The Port of Coos Bay, in fact, the state of Oregon, has gone out on the line, and gone out on a limb to make this rail line work, and that's great for the employers in the South Coast, who would not be able to reach markets without that rail line's presence. But without more cargo on that rail line, the costs become quickly prohibitive. This rail line serves manufacturers not only in Coos County, but in Western Lane County, and at American Bridge in my community, a manufacturer whose prime market is the midwestern part of the United States where they build rail bridges. The rail presence allows them to compete on a great basis because the costs are so low. Without the rail, American Bridge has a much harder time competing because all their material has to be shipped back to the Midwest. The rail is integral to their success, they're integral to my community's success. These projects would generate much-needed tax revenue to fund schools, roads, public health and safety, and other vital services. These are services that cities and counties in rural Oregon and along the coast have cut to dangerous levels. Much of the South Coast and the schools see free and reduced lunch populations at about 70% of the total. I think Marshfields might even be greater, I heard the other day, nearly 80%. Marshfield High School had 2,000 kids not many years ago, now has 700. Reed'sport High School had more than 400 students. We average more than 100 a class. When I began teaching 32 years ago, we're now down to about 200, half of that, because the family wage jobs have left. We need jobs for healthy communities. I care about our environment as much as anyone. My neighbors and I live on the Oregon coast because of it. Our environment is an asset that must be protected, and the Port of Coos Bay is taking steps to ensure just that. As a coastal resident, the environment is important to me, as I pointed out, and to my constituents. I believe coal can move through this state safely, and we can protect the environment and the public health. I know that we can expand our export capabilities while protecting our air and our waters. These projects will be built the right way. I've had the great opportunity to meet with the principals on the Port of Coos Bay bulk cargo plant. They are world-class, as Dave I'm sure will speak about later. They couldn't be better. They will meet all the strict local, state, and federal regulations and go through multiple reviews and public comment. The port takes environmental stewardship seriously. If a coal project goes forward, the Port of Coos Bay will absolutely require a full-contained transfer and storage facility. No open coal piles allowed, not on our coast. The port will also require that coal trains use the best available technology to control coal dust that some have concerns about. As the mayor of Reed'sport, I care about protecting our community and the quality of life. Part of that quality of life means being able to work in a meaningful job, to be able to feed your family, to instill hope, and to build our future, and a future on the coast for our children. It should not include living on food stamps, enrolling your kids in free and reduced lunch programs, and searching for work but finding none. We've had enough of that on the coast. You've seen enough of that in rural Lane County as well. It's time to bring economic opportunity and build a brighter future for all the communities and businesses between Eugene and Coos Bay and even further south. On behalf of my constituents in Reed'sport and on behalf of the city council of Reed'sport, who gave me their consensus that they support this program as well, and the many friends along the Oregon coast, I ask you, Mayor Pearson and the city council of Eugene, to stand in support of families, jobs, and prosperity, and against attempts to delay or block progress on the new export terminals in Coos Bay. And I want to point out that while I'm the convener of the Governor's Oregon Solutions process for the South Coast, I do indeed speak for the Oregon Solutions team and the Oregon Solutions Board. This was identified as one of our top priority projects, so I clearly speak for them. I'm obviously not speaking for the staff from any of the state agencies, nor am I speaking for the governor's office nor the governor himself, but I am speaking for people on the coast, and this is a project that can help bring us on our way to recovery. We hope you will support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Timchuk. I want to express my appreciation for your taking the time to come all the way over here to speak with us. Really pleased to have you.
My pleasure, and it's an honor.
Thank you. Next up is Ross McFarlane from Climate Solutions.
Good day, I'm Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ross McFarlane with Climate Solutions. We're a Pacific Northwest-based advocacy group whose mission is accelerating practical and profitable solutions. We also are part of a broad coalition of more than 100 different organizations that are united in a group called Power Pass Coal, who are working to deal with the prospect of huge amounts of coal being shipped off our ports. Councilmember Zelenka just asked me to start with a little bit of background in terms of what is happening for this whole industry, why the West Coast is such a priority, and how Coos Bay fits. You know, Oregon and Washington have both committed and have set schedules to get our power supply off of coal, and around the United States, we're seeing demand dropping like a stone, with a tremendous amount of power plants being shut down, new ones no longer being on the marks. The coal giants, in response to that, in response to industry statements in the financial community that coal is no longer a viable industry, are saying their best days ahead of them, looking at the export markets in Asia, China, and other developing economies. And so currently, there are five now. One was just taken off the books about a month ago in Grace Harbor, but there are five proposals for coal export facilities on the West Coast, which cumulatively, along with some small amount of coal which is being exported currently out of Canada, would amount to 150 million tons a year of coal being shipped through Northwest communities. And there's no reason to even think that that's an upper limit. Some estimates have made that much higher. And as a result of the tremendous amount of focus that has been raised on these proposals, the out-of-scale on this, the issues of coal being the dirtiest fuel, we've seen an outpouring of concern and opposition and requests for detailed area-wide and cumulative studies from a wide variety of communities that transcend any kind of stereotyping of urban, rural communities, conservative or liberal communities, places like Mosher, Hood River, DOWs, as well as communities like Waschuggal, Camas, Marysville in the state of Washington, all whom are very concerned about the coal export issues. So what are the issues? You know, pollution, the issues of diesel and coal dust, the issues of the shipment with the coal, the largest ships' expansion there, and the issue of global warming, which will be created by those, the coal export, the coal that is finally being exported. I wanted to just start by putting in context the issue which not surprisingly brought Climate Solutions into the Power Pass Coal Coalition. Our mission is to move towards practical and profitable solutions and move away from fossil fuels. You have to start with the issue of, is this a big issue? And I know the Eugene City Council has made very serious commitments to transition your own energy supply and becoming a leader, and leading the state of Oregon as a leader in a transition. So for scale, I'm sure you've all heard about the controversy involving the Keystone Pipeline statement from the leading national climate scientist that this would be a game-over issue. We've done some analysis which would suggest that the coal being burned by the coal proposals, export proposals off the West Coast, would actually be a larger analysis. To put it another way, I think you're all aware that in communities like Eugene, the biggest contribution that we as citizens have to global warming is driving our cars, the fuel that we burn in our automobiles. If we built these facilities, we'd be looking at wiping out all the gains that we would have in Oregon, as well as all of the other states as far east as Minnesota. Or, you know, a final comparison is looking at the coal export, excuse me, the existing coal-burning facility at Boardman. You'd be talking about 50 times that in terms of the emissions that would be created. And the key issue is, are we going to be facilitating the building of new power plants in China and other Asian economies, locking in dangerous climate disruption, and putting us on an unsustainable path? Dr. Andy Harris is going to talk more about the pollution and health issues. I do want to just say, there's often claims that we hear that the opponents and the people concerned, as we are, are overstating the issue of coal dust, and that we're somehow making up these issues. This statement here, plumes of coal dust are overwhelming, hard to avoid, being pelted with coal particles. You might wonder if that's from a Greenpeace volunteer, someone at Sierra Club. It's actually a VP of Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and all the information that we're using on the significant impacts of coal dust are actually coming from the railroads and the coal industry itself. The final thing that I'd just say again to put in perspective that this is a significant concern is Portland General Electric, which decided not to lease a site up on the Columbia River that it was requested from a coal proposal, because it had a nearby power plant, and was very concerned about the coal dust fouling its operations at that power plant. PGE is the entity that actually operates the Boardman facility. If it feels that coal dust is too big a concern for a power plant, you have to wonder how it is for citizens. Another issue which has gotten significant play, and I think is important to your consideration, is what is becoming unified tribal opposition to these coal export terminals, because of concerns about pollution, concerns about fisheries, and concerns about the danger to their communities. This is a tribe up in Northwest Washington symbolically burning a check of not even millions in the mitigation that they've been offered. In terms of the transportation impacts, I just think you need to put into perspective that currently, all freight shipped into Oregon and Washington amounts to about 80 million tons per year. If these coal terminals are built, it would triple the amount of shipments, and some consultants have predicted that that is really just the tip of the iceberg, and that up to 350 million tons would be exported from the United States if the demand continues. That's going to create tremendous impacts throughout Oregon and throughout communities like Eugene, and there'd be significant needs, obviously, to upgrade the current rail line between Eugene and the coast, and ensure that the impacts are being addressed. There's a lot of concerns about small communities, as well as intersections in Eugene, which should be studied and should be addressed. There's also no assurances that the size of the terminal that has been proposed for Coos Bay would remain at that size. Our first experience was working on a terminal at Longview, where they were proposing a five-and-a-half million tons per year facility. Documents showed that the actual facility that they were hoping to do was much larger than that, and they're now proposing one 10 times that size. There's concerns, obviously, regarding traffic in communities, strategic needs of major shippers, passenger rail needs, and the cumulative impacts with other proposals, which is why so many major officials, including Governor Kitzab or Senator Wyden and others, have asked for a full study of cumulative impacts before any of these go forward. I think another concern that is particularly important to address is the concern around the risks of derailment. As you know, over 150 water bodies are crossed on the line just between Eugene and the coast. We've seen just this summer, actually now 13 different derailments, all involving coal trains, several of which have involved fatalities, all of which have involved major cleanup issues. There appear to be very significant issues with the coal, the coal dust, the size and weight of those trains, which makes them particularly prone, and that's something that fully needs to be studied. And finally, I think communities are coming together on the issue of public funding. To put the coal export issue into context, you need to understand that the public actually owns the coal that's being proposed. Most of the Powder River Basin coal in Montana and Wyoming is owned by the federal taxpayers, and is being leased out at far below market rates. Nearly $30 billion in taxpayer subsidies have been given to coal companies just since Rail crossing issues where the railroad is creating major disruption in communities, and you need to put in a grade separation, or you need to provide a traffic improvement. The railroads are limited by federal law to paying no more than 5%, and 0% to 2% is much more common, and that's been a huge concern for many communities along the line, as well as the issues around the kind of condemnation or impacts from the rail expansions that will be needed to deal with the tripling of traffic that would be created. There's issues around other infrastructure, including major bridges, and all of these, of course, are coming at a time when we no longer have active federal support for the kind of local spending on transportation, rail needs that might have existed previously. There's also concerns, and we're going to be coming out with a report in the next couple weeks from a property valuation expert, which is indicating that the coal train traffic can be creating significant issues around property valuation, which obviously is an externalizing of costs on the people who have property, whether it's residential or commercial, near the areas. For all these reasons, the opposition is not environmentalists against business, not conservation against jobs, but is much more complex than that, and in many cases involves city councils that are concerned about economic development, ports along the rail lines or shipping lines, as well as businesses. Over 400 businesses have expressed concern and opposition about these statements. And we also know that coal export is a very bad foundation for prosperity. Both in Portland in the 80s and Los Angeles more recently, the ports invested in significant coal export facilities and had to tear those down, move away at significant public expense and opportunity costs. There's tremendous volatility in the markets. Currently, the stockpiles in China and other Asian economies are at record highs, and so there's a lot of reasons to think twice, three times, and four times before you move ahead with those kind of proposals. All of these concerns get to the fundamental issue that this is an issue of economic trade-offs, externalities, where the benefits and profits are going to be held in a very small number of companies, while the impacts are going to be held throughout the region and the world. For that reason, we do ask you to move forward with the Resolution 8, which I understand is in front of you, requesting a detailed analysis from your city attorney and other officials on ways that you can act, together with many other communities and oppositions, requesting that you do an area-wide study and work together on others, and that you actually oppose these exports. And as Dr. Harris will indicate, we also hope that you will demand completion of an independent health impact assessment, and consider that in your analysis. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all today, and I'd welcome any questions after everyone's had a chance to speak.
Thank you very much. So, everybody, do you recall in our council chambers, when we're really in our council chambers, we don't have clapping, we don't have boos or hissing, or we don't do any of those things. We really work hard to be respectful of different points of view and to treat everyone so they will feel safe in our council chambers. So I ask that you please refrain from clapping or any other pleasure or non-pleasure responses. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Dr. Andy Harris. Dr. Harris?
Mayor Pearson and members of the council, thank you very much for the invitation to be here this evening. The issue of coal exports from the Northwest has become a real drama. We Oregonians said no to coal a couple of years ago. We decided that we didn't want to burn dirty coal, and when negotiated to close Oregon's one coal-burning power plant by 2020, we don't want to burn it, and we don't want to breathe it. We moved on to develop clean renewable energy like solar and wind. Now multinational coal companies are trying to convince us that we were on the wrong track, so to speak, that the transport and burning of coal is really just fine. We're not supposed to notice or care if the coal is actually burned here or somewhere else, like China or India. The players in this drama, Embrae Energy of Australia, Kinder Morgan, Arch Coal, want you to consider only one issue, jobs. What they don't talk about is pollution, air quality, health, and safety. All of us support job growth, but not at the expense of the quality of life that we value so much here in Oregon. If this were about wheat being shipped through Eugene, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I certainly wouldn't here, but coal is not wheat. Coal is by far the dirtiest of all the fossil fuels. With much cleaner sources of energy, including natural gas and renewables, we simply don't want to facilitate or enable the burning of coal. If Oregon exports cheap coal, this will drive down the world price of coal, and it's going to promote the building of more coal-burning power plants in Asia. So what is so harmful about coal trains? Well, coal trains are left uncovered to lower the risk of spontaneous combustion where coal bursts into flame. 2% to 3% of the coal load blows away during the course of an average trip. According to industry figures, the average loss of coal dust is 225 pounds per car during a 567-mile trip. The powdery coal from the Powder River Basin of Wyoming and Montana is far more friable than the hard, compact anthracite coal that's found in the eastern states. The more wind and the more curves in the rail line, the more the coal dust blows away. And the more rain, the more coal dust drains out the bottom of the cars onto the tracks, where it gums up the tracks, blows around onto our crops, and seeps into the groundwater. We sometimes hear that the Powder River coal is cleaner than coal from Asia and Australia because it contains slightly less sulfur. Let's be clear, there is nothing clean about coal. And because Powder River coal contains less BTUs, more of it must be burned to produce the same amount of energy as Asian coal. So coal dust has toxic metals like mercury, lead, arsenic, and cadmium. We know it is a trigger for asthma, and it causes chronic bronchitis and emphysema. Clearly, Eugene residents don't want to breathe coal dust in the air and have it settle on their gardens and their yards. Coal trains are also powered by three, or four, or five 4,000 horsepower Tier 2 engines, which leave a pall of diesel smoke in their wake. Diesel emissions cause asthma, heart disease, and cancer. The very small 2.5-micron diesel particles get all the way down the bronchial tree into the bottom of the lungs, and they transport more than 40 other toxic substances, some of which are suspected or known to be carcinogens. So a particular health risk for people living within earshot of the tracks is the incessant rumbling of the trains, which has been found to contribute to sleep disorders, no surprise there, but also hypertension, depression, and anxiety. This is an environmental justice issue, because generally, it's the people who can afford the least fine housing live next to the tracks. Clearly, there's a major difference between coal miners who choose to work in the mines and the general public, including asthmatics, people with emphysema, young children, and the elderly, who have not consented to exposure of toxic coal dust and diesel emissions. So we've heard that four trains of about 128 to 135 cars are expected to pass through Eugene each day, too full and too empty if this passes. Even the empty cars emit plenty of coal dust, as well as diesel emissions. The maximum speed of the coal trains is about 25 miles an hour through town, tying up traffic and delaying emergency vehicles like ambulances and fire trucks for up to five minutes at railroad crossings. That's about the same time that cardiac muscle starts to die following a heart attack. Coal companies like to talk about jobs, but they don't talk about the negative economic impact on the businesses that are adversely affected by the noise, by the soot, and by the inaccessibility for people who just want to cross the tracks. They don't talk about the negative impact also on property values, on tourism, or on lost days from school and work caused by increased lost days from school and work caused by increased air pollution. So do we care if dirty coal is burned in Asia? Sure. If it's too toxic for American kids, it's too toxic for Chinese kids. Beyond that, what Asia burns in their power plants comes back to haunt us as blowback of mercury, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, ozone, and 50 other toxic chemicals. These chemicals ride the trade winds, and they settle on our land, and they wash off into our rivers and lakes and reservoirs, and they contaminate the fish we eat and the food we drink. A 2008 study found that Asian emissions of mercury contributed 18% of the spring mercury concentrations on Mount Bachelor. Mercury is a potent neurotoxin that damages developing brains in children and fetuses, causing developmental disabilities, attention deficit disorder, mental retardation, seizures, and disturbances of gait and speech. In addition, coal-burning power plants are one of the leading causes of greenhouse gases and global warming. Coal burning produces one and a half times the CO2 emissions of oil combustion and twice that from burning natural gas. Global warming is not some sort of hypothetical model which may at some time actually affect this planet. Average temperatures in Oregon are 2 degrees Fahrenheit warmer than they were in 1970. We have already lost about 25% of our April snowpack since 1950. The loss of snowpack means diminished runoff during summer months, adversely affecting our recreation and tourist industries. Decreased water supplies will affect our clean water for drinking, also water for fish and wildlife, farming, and hydropower. We're all aware, particularly recently, of the more frequent and severe forest fires, and this has affected the quality of our air over the last month. Scientists also link global warming and climate change to more violent storms like tornadoes in the Midwest and hurricanes coming off the Gulf of Mexico. Sea levels have risen seven inches since 1903 and are expected to rise 19 inches in this century, and that's going to flood Oregon's coastal communities. So Oregon has already instituted a great many policies in the state to mitigate the effects of global warming, such as promoting mass transit and biking, also through building codes and weatherization of buildings. We are a leader in clean renewable energy in this state, and it's at a time when America needs our leadership to move in a more green energy future. It would be a major step backwards for Oregon to facilitate the transportation and shipping of coal. So I don't buy the argument of jobs at any price. I do hope that Coos Bay can grow their economy and develop their port, just not with coal. Many businesses could be deterred from locating in Coos Bay and the region if the port becomes a big coal export terminal. The ports of Portland, Vancouver, Washington, Tacoma, Kalama, and Gray's Harbor have turned down the opportunity to export coal because of the pollution and the health risks. The city of Portland, Multnomah County, and Metro have called for further environmental and/or health studies before the state of Oregon grants any permits. Towns heavily dependent upon tourism like Hood River, as you've heard, have passed resolutions opposing the transportation of coal through their communities. Physicians for Social Responsibility believes that coal trafficking represents a significant threat to human health, including asthma, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, heart disease, and hospitalizations. What we don't know is how much of the population will be impacted by coal transportation. That's why we really need a programmatic environmental impact statement and an independently-funded health impact assessment so that we can determine the extent of the risk. The health of our citizens is just too big an issue to ignore. Coal trains will provide little benefit to Eugene but are associated with multiple health and safety concerns. Little to gain and much to lose. This is a classic example of special interests versus the people, and I hope the council will stand with the people. Thank you.
Next up, thank you very much, Dr. Harris, and next up is David Koch.
Do I need to speak into this to be amplified? Okay. Thank you, Mayor Piercey, members of the council. My name is David Koch, and I'm the chief executive officer for the Oregon International Port of Coos Bay. I have some connections here to Oregon. I grew up here, my parents grew up here in the Eugene-Springfield area, and I myself am a double duck. I have a master's in science for environmental studies from the University of Oregon, and I have a law degree from the University of Oregon. I began my career as an environmental attorney for the U.S. Department of Transportation back in DC. I've worked as a land use attorney and a local government attorney down in Coos County for the last 10 years. Well, for 10 years, and then two years ago, I jumped out of the law. I'm a recovering lawyer now. And I came to work for the Port of Coos Bay, first as their chief operating officer, and then for the past couple of months now as the permanent CEO. I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity, all of us this opportunity, to come and speak to you a little bit tonight about the projects that the Port of Coos Bay is working on to ensure that the future of our region is vibrant and affords working people and their families economic opportunities that they deserve. The port's projects represent a unique opportunity for us to build a stronger local and regional economy in an environmentally responsible way that will provide us with badly-needed resources to improve the overall livability of our area. The Port of Coos Bay is committed to setting a more prosperous course for our region by building on our strengths: our deep-water harbor, our newly restored rail line, and our talented workforce to create long-term living wage jobs that will spur new sustainable economic opportunities for Oregon families. The port is pursuing these projects because, as Mayor Tim Chuck discussed, maintaining the status quo of chronic poverty in our communities is unacceptable. We have fewer job opportunities, lower average wages, and an overall diminished quality of life than most of Oregon, and we haven't even started exporting coal. Somehow, this happened all by itself over the last 30 years. And regardless of who you want to blame for the past 30 years of declining opportunities, the fact is that we've lost businesses and we've lost jobs, we've lost families, and we've lost schools. Add to that the great recession that everybody appears experienced over the last couple of years, and you start to have a sense of the struggle that we face on the South Coast. We do have a choice for our region, but it's not a choice between jobs and the environment. Instead, it's a choice between building a vibrant and prosperous community that's supported by a diversified economy, or the choice of continuing to watch economic opportunities and investments go elsewhere. On the southern Oregon coast, we've chosen to work for a stronger future in which our talented young people don't have to move away to find better lives, a future where our families can provide for the basic needs of their children, and a future that restores economic vitality to the entire region. But achieving that future has not been without its challenges. Some of you may recall when the Coos Bay rail line was shut down five years ago by a hedge fund that proposed to tear up the rails and sell them for scrap. Facing a crisis to our regional economy that threatened thousands of jobs throughout southwest Oregon, the Port of Coos Bay was called upon by our public and private partners, including Congressman DeFazio and the city of Eugene, to buy the railroad, to make repairs, and to restore rail service. With your support, we did just that, and the railroad reopened one year ago this week. The rail line now provides a critical link to national markets for more than 10 regional employers, including Swanson Brothers, Seneca Sawmill, Roseboro Lumber, and American Laminators, all right here in Lane County. These local companies and others in Douglas and Coos Counties, including the bridge builders that Mayor Tim Chuck referenced, and organic dairy farmers down in the Coquille Valley, rely on the Coos Bay rail line to stay in business. The port's renovated rail line provides a critical, cost-effective connection that links industrial employers in Western Lane, Western Douglas, and Coos Counties to the interstate rail network that passes through Eugene. The Coos Bay rail line also connects employers in Eugene and other manufacturing centers throughout the western United States to global markets through the largest deep draft coastal harbor between Puget Sound and San Francisco Bay. The rail link also provides benefits to Eugene in other ways. For every 100 rail cars pulled by locomotives on the Coos Bay line, there are 350 fewer diesel-spewing semi-trucks clogging roadways in Eugene and surrounding communities. This year alone, the Coos Bay rail line will be credited with removing more than 8,000 loaded semi-trucks from area roadways, which also reduces the potential for accidents, injuries, and deaths. Rail is, after all, the most energy-efficient and safest means of transporting freight over land. But to keep our rail line operational, we must address a significant backlog of long-term deferred maintenance that the port inherited when we acquired the rail line. So far, we have raised a remarkable $31 million in state and federal funding for tunnel, bridge, and major track repairs. But that's only about 1/3 of the $90 million that's projected to be needed for ongoing repairs over the next five to 10 years just to serve existing customers. We can't ignore those repairs and continue to operate a safe and efficient railroad. And yet, it's highly unlikely that either the federal government or the state of Oregon will be able to meet the projected $60 million funding shortfall for the railroad. As a result, the only choice we have is to pursue private investment in the rail line or to instead watch it continue to deteriorate until we too are forced to abandon it. The port and the communities served by the rail line, don't consider that a choice at all. There's only one direction forward. We are pursuing several projects to improve our deep-water harbor for the benefit of the regional economy, but only one of those projects would generate enough private capital to save this railroad. And although we do not even have a definitive project yet, we expect that the private investment in the Coos Bay Bulk Terminal Project, known as Project Mainstay, will pay not only for the existing backlog of repairs needed between Eugene and Coos Bay, but that it will also pay for additional capacity improvements that will allow our existing customers to continue to grow and innovate. During construction of the terminal and rail improvements, Project Mainstay will support more than 1,400 new jobs in Coos County alone, boosting personal income by more than $80 million during construction. At full buildout, the project would create more than 500 permanent new jobs in Oregon with an average income of $70,000 per year. Many of those Oregon jobs would be right here in Eugene, including at least 35 new railroad jobs at this end of the rail line. So now that you better understand the economic importance of this project to our region, I want to address some of the environmental concerns that have been raised tonight. You need to understand that the port cares deeply about our shared environment. The future we envision is one of economic vitality and a clean environment. First, there will be no open piles of coal at the terminal as shown in one of the earlier photos. In fact, one of our potential partners, Metro Ports, pioneered the technology for fully-enclosed coal storage and handling nearly 20 years ago at a facility that still ships coal today through Long Beach, California. Second, any contract to transport coal by rail will require that best management practices and the best commercially available technology to eliminate coal dust during transit be used. Covered coal technology is being actively developed and tested that can eliminate dust completely while significantly improving the fuel economy of trains. But even if that technology isn't available in five years when the first unit train started moving through Eugene, modern loading practices coupled with spray-on surfactants have been shown by studies to eliminate 95% to 99% of all coal dust emissions. Third, if this project moves forward, it will require rigorous federal and state environmental review that will provide many opportunities for public review and comment. As a likely applicant for the marine terminal and rail improvements, the port will be uniquely positioned to ensure that the project is developed in a manner that is consistent with community values and environmental stewardship. Fourth, we have been working with the Project Mainstay partners to develop a sustainable communities grant program that would be funded by a tariff collected against every unit train rail car. At full buildout, the grant program could provide more than $1.5 million per year to fund projects in participating communities on the rail line that have agreed to work with the port to improve economic and environmental livability for the region. These grant programs will include projects that could support the expansion of the new green economy into the rural communities of southwestern Oregon. I want to stress to you that the Port of Coos Bay is committed to creating good jobs and a brighter future for the region in an environmentally responsible way. We hope that the city of Eugene will reject the proposed resolution and instead choose to work with the port and other regional partners to ensure a more prosperous and sustainable economic future for our entire region. I want to thank you for your time and stand ready to answer any questions.
Thanks very much. Ready to turn the lights back up here? So now we're going to open it up to your council to ask any questions or make any comments they would like to. And I guess I'll say this probably now and many more times before we're through this conversation, but I do think I can speak for all of us that we wish the port to be successful. We wish your city to be successful. We wish for people to have good employment. And in fact, we support the rail. We want it to do good things. I don't know where people will end up on this resolution, but up or down in terms of our resolution, we care about your community, and we want to express that publicly to you.
Thank you.
So, questions? Alan?
Sure. Thank you for coming, Mayor, and everybody else. It was a very well-thought-out presentation, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you put into it and the time to come here today. One of the questions I have is that is about one thing that we call for in the resolution, which is that we support what Governor Kitzhoffer and Senator Merkley are calling for, which is a cumulative environmental impact statement. As Ross McFarlane from Climate Solutions mentioned, this isn't just about the Coos Bay to Eugene coal trains. This is a larger issue about big coal in the entire Northwest. And that whole scheme is impacting the Northwest and also climate change, coal dust, mercury from burning it, all these other issues that Dr. Harris mentioned. What's wrong with requiring a cumulative environmental impact statement before we move too far down this track, so to speak, and before it's too late, before we have too much investment, before we decide, oh, this isn't a good thing to do? Right now, my understanding is we have concerns about it, but we don't have this cumulative environmental impact statement to verify it. So can you guys address that?
You know, I've addressed it a couple of different ways. The proposals that I've heard only talk about doing a programmatic environmental impact statement for the Pacific Northwest on these new projects, and I'm wondering why you would draw the line there and only consider those exports that are being proposed through the Northwest without considering all of the national exports of coal throughout the Gulf and the East Coast of the United States? If you, particularly with the expansion of the Panama Canal, look at the larger vessels that will be moving through the Gulf Coast regions and down through that canal, what you find with commerce is if you stop it in one area, it'll find another route out. If it can find a path of least resistance out through another port where they're currently exporting coal out of the United States, that's the path it will follow. And then I also wonder if your concerns are about all of the things that have been raised on the train traffic and the diesel emissions from the locomotives and the development of the terminals and congestion on the waterways. Why stop with just coal? Why not look at all of the terminal expansions that are being proposed on the West Coast for all of the various cargoes? Potash, for example, is strip mined. It's moved in open-top coal cars, blowing dust. It moves through a marine terminal that has impacts on the waterways, and it goes over in those vessels to Asia. Why shouldn't that be included within the study if the Port of Vancouver, for example, is looking to expand their facility and bring in more vessels and more trains to service that? So I think that on our project, and I can't address the global issues here, I can address what's right for Coos County, what's right for southwest Oregon, and what we need here. And I can tell you that if we move forward with this project, there'll be a full-blown environmental impact statement prepared to look at not only the terminal impacts but the rail impacts on our rail line for the expansions that are needed, and it'll look at not only the direct impacts but the cumulative impacts as well.
And council, I might add to that. I have no particular concerns at all about a national discussion, but you know as well as I do, the very slow state of the way we move forward with discussions in this nation and move forward towards any sort of consensus. And so as an elected official on the And so, as an elected official on the coast and one who sees his communities suffer from the economic situations that have come up, I would really be concerned with timeliness. Are we talking about six months of national discussion? I'm not sure Coos Bay and Reesport and the coastal communities want another 10 years of this economic climate. And if that's what it's going to take for that discussion, at some point, the question, I think, for me as a representative of my community is, when do we have consensus? And I'm afraid that that's a long way down the line, and I'm not sure that it provides us with much more information than this side against that side. I'd also like to offer here, and I hope this is not out of line, I think the idea that from my perspective that this is big coal is a little bit of a straw man. The Port of Coos Bay is not big coal. American Bridge in my community is not big coal. These are real people, real places on the coast, real jobs. These are little guys. And that's what I'm here fighting for, is not big coal. And so, I think to make this, to turn this into a discussion about big coal and multinationals, to quote the doctor, I think is really not the issue. The issue is what's good for Oregon's southern coast. And from my perspective, what's good for Oregon's southern coast is jobs. And that's more than what we need. We need jobs.
Other questions?
If I could just speak briefly to your question, I think that looking at this on a nationwide basis would make sense. Senator Wyden, for example, has suggested that we need a timeout on a whole variety of proposals for energy export until we look at the economic, environmental, and other issues that are needed and do that on a comprehensive basis. Certainly in the context of coal, the reason that the factors that distinguish this from potash or other issues that have been suggested and that do require a look region-wide is just the scale of these proposals. The fact that the coal companies are proposing to, again, have more than double the amount of existing all-rail traffic coming for this one commodity. And then the fact that that is the world's dirtiest commodity that creates major emissions, both in our communities and globally.
George, did you have something?
Well, I had a question, I guess, for Mr. Koch. You had mentioned, you know, that the technology's not there yet to contain the dust. And evidently, they're, you know, trying to develop such a technology. I'm just curious about, you know, does the Powder River mines using surfactants now?
On new contracts for new movements of coal, both the BNSF and the UP are requiring the use of best management practices for the loading of the coal, to shape the load so that you don't have the rough edges that tend to catch the air flows over the top of the cars, and to use the spray-on surfactants over the top. So that, and that would be required, and we've indicated in our discussions with the folks evaluating the Coos Bay option that it will be required, the Coos Bay portion of the move, if nothing else. But you have a letter, I believe, that you received from Brock Nelson of the Union Pacific that addressed that issue head-on from the UP's standpoint.
But currently, that's...
It's currently required, yes. It is currently required for, and it would be required for these movements. I think what we're talking about with the covered cars, the fully enclosed cars, is still in a development mode. And there are a few different companies that are competing to have the model and the design that's chosen to go into mass production. But it's the fuel savings for the UP and the BNSF and the significant fuel savings that they see on those trips from the aerodynamic covers on those cars. I think that's going to drive the adoption of the technology faster than anything else.
Okay. So, have there been any studies done that show that the escaping coal dust has been reduced?
Yes. Yeah, and that 95% to 99% reduction isn't a number that I made up. It comes from one of the studies that we've reviewed that shows how the modern loading techniques and the use of spray-on surfactants can be effective, in particular, once you move past the first 100 miles of transit. And you still see a reduction in that first 100 miles, but the drop-off is significant, even for the untreated cars, but especially for the treated cars once you move beyond that.
I'm going to mic it. I'll be back to you, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to get my head around the scale of this because I find this an interesting discussion comparatively. I know that, for example, El Rapa talks about emissions into the air for local manufacturing in the hundreds and hundreds of pounds and tons as opposed to a few pounds. And so, I'm trying to understand the comparative scale of this. And I've heard both these gentlemen talk about 2% loss at the worst-case scenario without the modern technology. Over the course of the trip, and MapQuest is a beautiful thing, and on my computer that says from Wyoming is about 1,050 miles. So, a 2% loss over 1,000 miles comes out, at least from my kind of rude calculations here, at .0002% of the load. Does anybody have a number for me about what that actually is, is it goes through Eugene? Because that's, what, how many miles of track through Eugene?
Yeah, if it was a straight shot, it would be a little over 1,000 miles. The route that we've been looking at is closer to 1,700 miles for the rail transit. And the numbers that you're talking about, I think, if you assumed that there was an even spread of loss through the entire 1,700 miles, you know, then you might be able to draw some of those numbers. But by the time it gets here, it's significantly less, to the extent that, like, over 90% of the railcars that passed by the testing station that BNSF set up 500 miles from the mine site showed no emissions coming off those cars. From the treated ones, there were still dust emissions coming off the untreated cars. I'm not aware of a single incident where either there's been an EIS or a regulatory enforcement action for violation of clean air standards from the transport of coal. And the example I mentioned of coal moving through Long Beach, California today, that's moving in open-top uncovered, uncovered cars through the most stringent air quality emissions district in the United States of America.
I appreciate that. And one of the interesting things, too, a friend of mine, County Commissioner, put on a picture on his Facebook page the other day of some of the things we do for valuable reasons in our community. One of them is burning in area wetlands. And he was, he showed a picture of some recent work done in west Eugene to burn off a bunch of things in the wetlands. We put a good chunk of stuff in the air that's necessary for other reasons, and there's a good deal of reason why we value El Rapa to guard our air safely in this area, and I'm glad they do. But I want to make sure that we're talking about apples to apples here. So, if we're talking about a significant environmental issue, let's please have some comparative information for other local industries as well. I'd also be interested to know what we're currently shipping on rail. I don't know, honestly. I mean, do we put benzene, for example, on cars these days? Do we, I mean, do we put other dangerous products on the road, on the railroads today that we're not in arms about?
Most commodities are shipped by rail. Both commodities have, commodities that are actually characterized as hazardous waste or hazardous materials are shipped by rail through Eugene, throughout the Oregon. Coal is not considered a hazardous material or hazardous waste.
I'm wondering why we're focusing on a commodity that, by some folks' opinion and by some standards, may be less dangerous than many other things we're already shipping through the community right now. I mean, will we be suggesting we shut down the rail entirely next? I'd really like us to have a full consideration of good information, apples to apples, if we're going to do this. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything to any of that, Ross?
Well, certainly, none of us are proposing shutting down the rail and are strong supporters of rail for a whole variety of commodities. First, I'd say regarding the issue of surfactants and other methods to be able to address this, just very little is yet known about the effectiveness, and that's something that needs to be studied much more. We do know that the regulations which the railroads have put in place are being not uniformly enforced or being responded to. And so, that there are many loads which are still going out without the use of those surfactants. We also know that Powder River Basin coal is extremely friable, and there's a lot of issues in terms of the surfactants applied to this cover layer breaking down over a period of time. To those who say this isn't a concern, again, I'd refer people to the railroad zone information, to a lot of studies in places where we're receiving huge amounts of coal currently and where communities are facing that burden, and particularly Australia, where many communities are currently raising very significant concerns about the massive issues of coal and the health and environmental burdens that it creates upon them.
Alan, you're up.
So, just to be clear and reiterate something that the mayor said, there isn't anybody at this table, and I don't think anybody in this room, that isn't for family wage jobs and prosperity, not only here in Eugene, but also in Coos Bay. And we, and I, support the Coos Bay rail line and transformation of the port. I think that's a great idea, and it will be, help your economy. And I'd love nothing better than to have wave buoys built in Eugene or Portland, travel on the Coos Bay rail line to Coos Bay to generate renewable energy power.
Can we build one in Reesport?
We could. Not my preference, but sure.
Goshen's a nice place, too.
So, this really isn't, and we want you to be successful, and that's not, but that's not what this is about. This isn't about, this isn't a referendum on the port, and it's not a referendum on your plans or the Coos Bay rail line. We support that and all those things. This is about one small part of that, which is the coal trains, the coal terminal and the coal trains, and exporting that much coal. This is really an issue about large coal and big coal. And I know it's kind of an inconvenient truth to not think about that, but this is really about that. What's happening today, and the reason these proposals have all popped up in the Northwest, is that currently in the United States, the market for coal is about $10 a ton, roughly. And in Asia, we're seeing it well over $100 a ton, $150 a ton, sometimes 100 and over that in Japan. And so, what we're seeing is big coal wants access to those, that big differential. It's all about those profits associated with that. And going through all these communities, which is why all these communities in Washington and the Northwest are upset about that. Burning that much coal, as Mr. McFarlane said, is equivalent of the CO2 that is generated by the cars in all of the western United States, from North Dakota to California and from Washington to New Mexico. And that is an enormous amount of CO2. I think the most important factor in determining whether we can prevent catastrophic global climate disruption is the direction of the energy infrastructure in the fast-growing Asian countries and in their economies. And unless we are successful in shifting from fossil fuels to clean energy, we will forever lose the chance to prevent dangerous climate disruption. And should you think that the Asians are just going to look somewhere to get their coal, we might as well give it to them. There's an ethical question here. If we know, and not to belabor the point about climate change, but we know that those impacts are occurring now and they're going to continue to. And for us to facilitate that is not only against our own policies from the city of Eugene, but also at the state level.
You want to interrupt, Alan?
And so, I'm curious your guys' reaction to that. I mean, it's an inconvenient truth to think about it and like that, but I would like your reaction to it.
Do you want to go first?
I feel like I've been hogging there. I agree with you on one thing in particular. I do think it's an ethical question. But I think it's an ethical question whether we continue to say flowery things but deny action in communities where 75% of the kids in my school districts are on free and reduced lunches. They're getting sent to school as five-year-olds, testing as three-year-olds because they're not getting the resources that they need growing up, where child abuse is at one of the highest rates in Coos County than any other place in the state, and it's because of neglect in our communities. I mean, that's the reality day-to-day. And with respect to the senators that call for a timeout so we can study this, we've been on a timeout for 30 years in the forest products industry down there. And we're still fighting over whether we can log the Elliott to provide money for our school districts. So, I believe that we need to have a discussion about it. I believe that we need to get the research on it. I believe that we need to study it and understand it. If we can avoid impacts, we avoid them. If we can minimize impacts, we minimize them. But if we can't avoid or minimize, then we mitigate, and we find a way to replace what we lose. But you cannot hold communities on the south coast hostage to a larger ideological mission when they're burning $5 billion and growing tons of coal in Asia every year, and we're going to hold back six to 10 out of Coos Bay because we think it's the ethical thing to do. I would put to you that I disagree, and I think the ethical thing to do is to not continue to starve our rural communities over somebody else's fight.
All right. I've got Pat and then Chris.
There was a couple other people on to respond.
Oh, I didn't see anybody.
Him and him and him.
I didn't see Ross.
I just want to say, and I really appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Koch, that in many instances, public health does trump economic interests. This has happened many times in this country. For example, the emissions of coal from coal-burning power plants, you know? You just can't pollute anything you want. You've got to have emissions controls, and they get stepped up over the course of time. Or, you know, we don't use DDT, we don't use PCBs, we don't add lead into gasoline and, you know, into paint and things like this. So, we do have, when it's a compelling reason to curtail something for the public good, our country's pretty good at moving in that direction. One of the things that came up as you were talking about this surfactant, we sort of speak about that like it's sort of going to be a cure-all. And I don't know much about surfactant, but I think we'd all like to know a lot more about it. What's in it? You know, what happens to it when it gets to Coos Bay? Is it then sort of burned up in the power plants over in Asia? Or is it taken off? And if it is, then does it go to a landfill? And does, you know, there's all those sort of questions. I think what I'm saying is, I think we just need to study that. I mean, if we can slow the process down for, and I don't agree it ought to be 10 years, I mean, but it might be a couple of years. And I love your concept about doing this sort of a worldwide, or at least a nationwide. We need an energy policy in this country. But I think realistically, we are faced with sort of the proposal for five export terminals. And we might like to think globally, but I think we really have to concentrate on what's on the table. And this is probably a bite that we could chew in the next, whatever, year or two.
I should say two things?
Just briefly. Shipping subsidized coal on subsidized infrastructure will materially increase burning of coal. And the critical issue, which is how rapidly Asian economies are going to be continuing to build new coal-fired plants or move in a new direction. So, we do have an ability to contribute directly to that. Numerous studies have shown that coal actually has, imposes more costs on society than it creates in economic benefits. And I'd be happy to share a number of those. And finally, the communities around the region, whether it's places like Cheney, Washington, or Moser, or Benjen, Waschugel, are also facing very significant economic issues, having businesses that are struggling. And they're speaking out about the impacts that are going to be facing them. I think that's the kind of situation that communities in Eugene, whether they're doing well or not doing so well, are facing. So, it's not an issue of richer against poorer communities.
And Mayor, if I might add very quickly, Mr. McFarlane, you mentioned that you are a supporter of rail for a whole variety of commodities. I think I got your quote just right. But I think Dave can speak better to this. Railroads have a common carrier obligation. They don't pick and choose the commodities that they want to ship on them. I don't like rutabagas very much, but I don't think the Port of Coos Bay can tell me that, all right, because the mayor of Reesport doesn't like rutabagas, we're not shipping rutabagas on our rail line. Commodities are commodities, and the rail lines are in the business of shipping commodities. So, if you support rails, you support the movement of commodities along the rail, not picking or choosing those. And the map that showed the enormous amount of CO2 that would be generated, that would be equal to all the cars in the 12 western states or 14 western states, whatever the map was, fair enough. So, if our argument here is that we're opposed to CO2, are we considering a resolution down the line that's opposed to cars in the 14 western states? If you're talking about the same amount of CO2 being generated?
Okay. Now, Pat, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I really appreciate that this panel has been assembled because we've received a great deal of testimony since the issue came up. And much of the email and much of the testimony we receive is pretty emotional, and it's good to see four people giving relatively non-emotional responses to the questions that we have. And I have, I've received hundreds and hundreds of pages of testimony and hundreds and hundreds of individual... of individual parts, segments of testimony. It just is really good to hear four people, once again, giving a non-emotional response to the questions that we ask. A lot of the questions have been thrown out so far. To me, all the pages of testimony that I've received kind of boil it down to three basic areas in favor and three basic areas opposed to the coal train. In opposition, we have coal trains up to "two miles long," quote, end quote, will block road intersections for, some people say five minutes, some people say hours. Coal trains, coal dust filtering from the trains, number two, will create a film of residue. An estimated pound of coal dust per car mile is lost to the wind, that's quote, end quote. And three, global warming. We've discussed global warming a little bit. On the positive side, we're hearing that private money from companies will provide new infrastructure in western Oregon. And two, that building the infrastructure and the busy dock, port will provide both long- and medium-term, high-paying jobs. And third, that unemployment has caused a really sharp decline, a sharp increase in poverty levels in Coos Bay and all along the coast. And that kids, we've heard 80% in Marshfield is higher than that, in some grade school districts, it's 100% on the coast of kids that are qualified for free and reduced-priced lunches. So, you know, that's, all the issues have come out, and we have a balance on both sides. I've come up with three basic areas on each side, but I do have one question, just one question. I think it may be for you, Mr. McFarland. It's a quote that I'm reading by, from our Congressman Peter DeFazio. And the quote from, it's quoted in the world, is, "You're not going to facilitate closing down coal plants by prohibiting the sale of U.S. coal." That's a quote from Congressman DeFazio. So, is he right on that, or can you refute what he has to say?
Well, it might surprise you, but I'd actually agree with him. We're not, this isn't about closing down or accelerating the closure of Asian power plants. The real issue is how rapidly Asia is going to continue to build new power plants. Coal power plants are relatively inexpensive to operate, especially with subsidized coal, but they're very expensive to build. And they have to compete against options that are rapidly becoming more expen, I mean, rapidly becoming more competitive, whether it's natural gas, which is a key factor displacing here, renewable energy, or energy efficiency, which is the key story in the Northwest and is rapidly getting implemented around the world. So, the big issue is, are you, if you're going to put a lot of subsidized cheap coal on the market, are you going to drive prices down and encourage Asian economies to continue to use the stuff?
Thank you. That's, you've covered that very nicely. I think then what it boils down to me, for me, is that we have a balance between what is the long-term effect of coal, both globally and locally, and how much does it actually affect what happens in this community, both long-term and short-term? And what is the immediate effect of kids not getting food and of people not working in our surrounding counties? That's the balance that we have to look at. The effect, proven or not proven, and the effect on kids in the communities. So, that's the balance that we have to look at. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you. I, first off, want to thank everyone for taking the time to be thoughtful and deliberate about this. The fact that we took the time to invite you to come and speak to us, I think, is tremendous, and I appreciate your coming and doing that, and for us to listen. For me, one of the, one of the real challenges I have with this is, it's a classic collision of values where none of the values are wrong. All four of you are right. And it's very difficult for me to hear all four of you speak and recognize that you're all saying true things. You're all right. The values are in collision. And I hate it when the values that collide become ones of quality of life versus quality of livelihood, because they shouldn't collide, and they shouldn't be at odds with each other. And I'd love to figure out a way and bottle it where we cannot have to have those constantly be the collisions that we have. The practical side of this is that I really have to think about what I realistically can have an impact on and what realistically is not within my purview, what I can't do. How can I care about the health and safety of the people within my community without hurting people in other communities? I don't want to have to pit one against the other. Is there a way where I can protect the health and safety of people in my community to my satisfaction without hurting the livelihood of another community? Is that possible to do? I think if I have to make the decision today, it's going to be very challenging, because I don't have the answer to that question right off the top of my head. Finally, a last consideration is, will what we do here have a real and lasting impact on anything? The resolution is advisory, from what I understand. It doesn't really have a bearing on the federal transportation requirements. I know there's a provision in the resolution to say to explore whether or not something like that is possible. And that would be the meat of any passage of the resolution for me, would be whether or not I want to go down that road. I appreciate Alan bringing it up, because I think it is an important conversation, not just for this, but for some other areas. Where I work, we talk about being ruthlessly strategic. And what that means is, you have to pick and choose what you want to focus your effort on, so that you can get the maximum benefit for your community, for my community. And one of those things which are interesting, which are nice to talk about, which may have a global perspective, which is, which is of value, but is not affecting the 160,000 people that I was elected to serve. I don't want to pit one against the other and say one is more valuable than the other, but to be ruthlessly strategic means you have to take the time to make sure you focus on where you really need to focus. And for me, right now, I'm thinking about 160,000 people. That means I don't have an answer, and I need time to think.
So, I want to tell all of you and everyone in the room that we're going to end this in 10 minutes, 15, actually, and clear the room, and then have people come back in at 7:15. So, we're going to, at 7:00, we're going to do the big, the big transition here. Empty out and empty back in again. So, I've got Mike and Alan in the queue, and then I would really like to give everyone who's come here and taken the time to speak to us to have a couple more sentences to say before we wrap things up. So, yes, you want to get in the queue, too? All right, so queue in and queue out quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, didn't say so beforehand, but I really want to say thank you, poor gentlemen, for coming to help us with this. Information's very valuable, and we really appreciate your time very much. I was struck, and I appreciated very much what Chris just said. He always captures this very well, at least from my perspective, and boils down the essence of a decision very well. I was struck by something Alan said, too, that, of course, everyone around the table wants to help to the degree that we can to promote a healthy economy in our rural neighboring communities. And I agree. I would also suggest that everyone around the table has an equally valid concern in protecting the environment that all of us live in here. And all of us want to have the best outcomes in both of those settings, and all of us care a great deal. I would say, though, that what we're presented with, with this decision, is really kind of the opposite, though, and I'd ask us to think through the ramifications of that, that when it comes to this as an environmental question, what we're being asked is not, do we care or not? It's, should, you know, to be careful to do no harm. We're being asked, is this harmful, so we want to make sure we don't do harm? I would ask us to look at the exact same level of information for the other part of that equation and to say, what part of our decisions could cause harm to our neighbors, to the rural economies, and frankly, to our own, from the lost opportunities that we'd see? So, if we have these competing values that I agree with, that we should be ensuring that we're doing no damage to the degree that we can to our local and regional environment, we should certainly be analyzing how we can make sure we're doing no damage to our local economy and our neighbors' economies as well.
Alan?
Yeah, so, again, if, we do support the port and the creation of the jobs there and the economy there, but the coal terminal itself, and that, according to our PAC, is only a small portion of the whole package, it's about 7% of it. So, it's not as if the entire port's success revolves around the coal terminal. That's correct? The port is much more than just this coal terminal. It's about the export of a whole bunch of different types of goods, and coal is a very small portion of it, and our PAC, it says just a small, about 7% of the jobs associated with it. So, it's a bigger, broader package than that, right?
Is that, is that quite, I'm not sure where that number comes from. We currently, through the Port of Coos Bay, we'll see anywhere from 1.5 to 2 million tons of cargo a year moving through the bay over the last, and that's been the case for the last 10 years. Historically, late '70s, early '80s, we were shipping between eight and 10, eight and nine million tons of cargo a year through 300-plus deep draft vessels. We're down to 50 to 60 vessels now. We dropped, down to 25 in 2009 with the downturn. So, this would be a significant increase in the, getting us back to about half of the level where we were 100, 5 million tons a year of coal, about 100 vessel calls a year to the port, one unit train a day moving down the rail line. So, it's more than 7%. And it's what paves the way for, it's what paves the way on the rail line for future expansions and future opportunities for containers and whatnot. If you're talking about the LNG facility, and you're talking about the dollar investment?
Talking about the other export portions of the port. It's not all just exporting coal, correct?
We export logs through one terminal.
With the Coos Bay Rail Line, specifically.
The only commodities moving on the rail line for export right now are some wood chips going through the Roseburg Forest Products Terminal. So, there's only one marine terminal that actually utilizes the rail line to bring cargo in for export.
Right, but once the investments are made, another 75 million, that requires to get the rail line up to adequate safety measures and infrastructure, then more than just coal's going to be going down, up and down that.
Unless somebody builds a numerical for us.
So, the, you know, it's, it's not really about, to me, you know, Chris has talked about the impacts on other communities, and it's always a trade-off. It's not as if this happens, and there's all things bright and glory and nice in Coos Bay, and nothing else happens. There are plenty of things that happen beyond that, and it's a real trade-off. I was just in, working on a project in the San Francisco Bay Area related to climate change and the impacts on the San Francisco Bay Area. And the impacts of the sea level rise associated with, the models are showing us, over the next 50 to 100 years, have, have almost, have an enormous impact on infrastructure in the Bay Area, in the San Francisco Bay Area. It puts Highway 880, which runs along the east side of the bay underwater. It puts the San Francisco and Oakland International Airports underwater, and it changes a whole slew of infrastructure, including water and wastewater treatment plants underwater. And all of that has an enormous amount of impact, and it's the billions and billions of dollars that we will be spending to adapt to that, that I think is often mischaracterized or misunderstood in this conversation. It's not as if we just go along and do nothing, and there's no cost associated. Doing nothing around climate change has enormous price tag. And just, you know, how much does it cost to replace the Oakland International Airport and the San Francisco International Airport? And that's just a couple of areas that have had this kind of study done, because they have the wherewithal to be able to do that. So, to me, it's a trade-off. And there's always a trade-off about what happens when, there's an action and a reaction to it. There's always something else that occurs. So, it's always important to incumbent upon us to take into consideration what is it that happens as a result of the actions that we take, and specifically us facilitating those actions.
Mayor, may I jump in? Thank you. I'd like to know if we're comparing apples and apples here. I think the Good Doctor talked about seven inches of ocean rise in the last century and predicted up to 19, which I've seen less, in the next century. So, the Oakland Airport is only 19 inches above sea level? I would find that hard to believe.
It's right on the bay.
19 inches is that much?
Well, the global, there's up to 60 inches over the next 100 years in the Bay Area.
Well, which is what, which is what I'm talking about. Let's make sure we're talking about like, like numbers.
100 years with all the jet packs.
Yeah.
Jet packs a long time ago, we never got them.
And the other, the other thing I'd like to bring up, and I don't know if the, you know, Dave answered this, about this particular project being part of the Port of Coos Bay's overall list of things to accomplish and how important it is to the overall port. I know that this project is important to the railroad, and the Port of Coos Bay has a railroad. So, there, you've got a different entity there, you're dealing with a railroad. And the success of that railroad is important to the shippers in my community, like American Bridge, because American Bridge now pays, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, $200 to $300 surcharge per car, or something like that? I mean, per car.
I can't quote you the actual number, but, yeah, they're all paying more.
Yeah, and it's, right, for the rail line. And as cargo goes up down the rail line, so, down goes the surcharge that the, that an employer in my community pays, which makes them all the more competitive in the markets that they delve in. So, while, while this project, I don't know, I can't speak to what its importance to the Port of Coos Bay is. I know this project is absolutely important to the railroad. That means it's absolutely important to the shippers in my community.
Okay, I'm going to give George and Betty time, and we're, we're now crowding in on five minutes, so your, your time for your wrap-up sentence is narrowing.
I'll pass, Mayor. My concerns are.
Betty?
I agree, we should leave our guests some time, but I just want to say that nothing is more important than public health, and nothing is more important than whatever we could do to, in a small way, to contribute to stopping global warming and climate change. And that's, I grew up with a father who was unemployed most of my childhood, and I know how important jobs are. But if someone had poisoned me during that time, it wouldn't have, with, if I had been breathing more coal dust or something else, I wouldn't have had a chance to grow up and be healthy, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. So, why don't we now shift to, I'll just add one comment. I appreciate everything that everybody has said. I just want to make a point that I don't think the discussions of health and science are ideology. I think they are about some of the major questions that affect each and every one of us, and we have to balance those things and look at them in a real, in a real sense. But this isn't about ideology. This is really about each of us trying to figure out what's best and right for our So, let us, I have, Mayor, would you like to say a wrap-up comment?
And I'll be very, very quick as well, very brief. I'd like to go back to one comment that I thought was really well-stated, the idea of doing no harm. And I believe that that, that's something I can buy into. And I think we can do that here and do that in a way that doesn't do economic harm to my community, it doesn't do economic harm to the communities on the coast, and we can do it in a way that the Port of Coos Bay is proposing, to meet all the stringent environmental standards, and even some that are futuristic, in a sense, because those environmental standards don't exist now. So, they're already looking forward to those kinds of solutions. I think this is a project we can get our hands around, and I certainly encourage all of us to do, to do so, and let's put jobs back on the South Coast where they once existed. I'd also like to finish with saying, this has been a true honor as well as a pleasure. I think the business here has been conducted in a superlative manner. And I want to personally thank the mayor, although every time you said, "Thank you, Mayor," I was turning around to say, yeah, I haven't said anything.
Okay.
I'm used to that. I want to, I want to personally thank the mayor for being gracious enough to call me back six weeks ago when I contacted her office, and I hope I had some small part in facilitating this discussion. Thank you. I think that's the way we all need to conduct business.
You're very welcome. So, Russ?
So, question came up, is this an issue that you can have a real impact on? And the answer is yes. This is the largest issue affecting global warming and sustainability, which is going to be directly affecting communities here in the Northwest. And it's also creating real direct economic and environmental impacts and health impacts in those communities. And by joining the dozens of other communities and elected officials, by expressing your concerns, by ensuring that full study is being done, you have the ability to ensure that this doesn't move forward without full review. There's enormous economic trade-offs, and I think it's important to reiterate as we talk about how this, you know, how this will affect the coastal communities, that history suggests, and current economic conditions suggest, this is a very risky and poor strategy for economic development. So, expressing your concerns and weighing in is certainly not affecting anything that is a slam dunk for those communities.
To that, Dr. Harris?
The comment, first, do no harm, that's the first thing I learned in medical school. I think that comes from us docs, and you all are interpreting it very nicely. I appreciate that. The one thing that's made me a little bit nervous about the discussion, I've been hearing about sort of ideal about sort of ideal technology which may be developed, and it's like, things in the port will all be completely covered, and there'll be no open piles of coal. I get nervous when I hear about what technology will bring, because the reality is that in Newport News, where they have a export facility, the asthma rate is twice that in the rest of Virginia. There's a study that I would have to double-check, but it's out of Australia, where the port workers who are exporting coal have a cancer rate nearly three times that of the general population. So, these are issues that I didn't bring up, because I'm not really talking about the port, I'm talking to you all that live in Eugene. And I think that we just have to go back to, so, what's the real reality about this? I mean, what does it mean to the people of Eugene? And that's where I come back to the kids and the elderly and the people with emphysema and the people that have asthma. And, you know, that's where the first do no harm, I think, is really our first priority. And at the very least, I want to study this issue fairly thoroughly to find out how many people are going to be impacted, and what's the cost of that going to be to society?
David?
First of all, the, I'm going to close with the four points that I closed with in my, in my presentation. Covered storage and handling facilities at the terminal site is not futuristic jet-pack technology. It exists today. It's existed in Long Beach, California, for nearly 20 years. Metroports pioneered the technology. They may be the only coal export terminal in the United States that uses a fully enclosed, covered storage facility, enclosed conveyors, and a dust suppression system for the loading of the vessels. They do it in the most strict air quality control district in the United States of America as well, and they do it successfully without environmental problems. That is the company that we chose to work with us on this problem. That's the technology, updated 20 years, that will be put into practice in Coos Bay if this project moves forward. The shaping of the coal loads and the spraying on of the surfactant is proven technology today. Covering the coal cars is something that we think will be in place in five years, but I can't guarantee that, nobody can. But we know that the shaping, the best management practices for the loading of the cars cuts down and virtually makes that 2% to 3% figure, almost a ridiculous figure to throw around, considering how aggressive the class ones are getting at that, to keep the coal dust from becoming a foulant on their rail lines. It's a real money issue for them as well, which is why they're pushing it so hard. Third, this project is going to go through at least two or three years of environmental permitting and review. Everybody will have an opportunity to review the plans in detail. Everybody will have an opportunity to pick apart the environmental reports and studies that are done. Everybody will have a chance to comment on them as we move through this process. What you're being asked to do in support, in this resolution, is to call for studies, but also oppose the project no matter what. And that's kind of disingenuous. Call for the studies and reserve judgment on whether you're going to support or oppose this project. Agree to sit with us around the table and find ways where there are impacts to mitigate those impacts. But avoid the temptation to pass a resolution like this that directs your city manager and city attorney to go out and find ways to legally oppose the project before the studies have even been done and we know all of the answers. And fourth, join with us in the development of this grant program that we're going to put together for the benefit of all of the communities on the rail line, to find ways to support green tech projects, not only in Eugene, but in Florence, and in Reedport, and in Coos Bay and North Bend. This is a program that we've already gotten buy-off on from the partners that we're working with, to pay extra on every rail car, to fund a grant program that will bring the green economy to southern Oregon. It's not there now, and you're not going to get it with all the wishing and hoping and praying. You're going to get it if we can get private investment in dollars and resources into our community to fund the green rooftops and the solar panels and the electric vehicle charging stations and all of the, and health clinics that we desperately need today in our communities. And that's what we're asking you to join with us as a partner for the future of our communities.
Thank you all very much. With that, we'll close the meeting.